Please read the statement of compliance.
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. Notice that this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Paquonic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Will you please read the statement of compliance? Sorry, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gitten?
Here.
Ms. Zegel?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney is absent. Mr. Pompeo will be late. Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Mrs. Shenton?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the flag salute.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I didn't get minutes, damn it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March third workshop meeting. You will notice tonight that the board is wearing orange in support of Gavin and his fight. We attended the boys' basketball game against Roxbury last Friday night on two twenty-one, and we're blown away by the show of support for Gavin, not only from our town but from the visiting team. This is another example of why Paquonic is such a special place. Gavin, we are all behind you. You have this, and as Mr. Hazler said on Friday, game on. The board would also like to wish our hockey team good luck tonight, and we would like to wish Sofia Clecha and Charlie Esposito good luck this weekend in the state wrestling tournament. I know that I'll be watching. I hope the rest of you will be as well. Additionally, NJSLA testing starts next week, and the board would like to wish our students good luck. And last, as was mentioned in our last meeting, the board has started negotiations with the PTEA for a new contract. We have two future meetings planned, and we're looking forward to continuing the outstanding relationship between the board and the teachers association. That's it for me, and I'll pass the mic to Dr. Portis.
Thank you, Mr. Senick. For my, I do my report. I'm going to send it over to our student representatives who will read the statement of compliance. Kidding, they will not. You're off the hook. You're fine. Over to the Zagla girls.
Good evening, everyone. So glad to see you all again. Congratulations to Claire Sitting, Emma Hawthorne, Kylie Cannon, and Aubrey Lynch for breaking the school record by four seconds for the girls' four by four hundred. Congratulations to Sofia Clecha, who placed second at the region tournament and will be moving on in, moving on into states. Good luck. Congratulations to Joe Barrakira on breaking the state record with number of points in a game, recording eleven points in the quarterfinals. For ice hockey, hockey will be playing a semi-final game as we speak against Lake Glen. And the game on Gavin for both the boys and the girls' basketball games was a great success. Final numbers are still being tabulated from the, from the HSA, but we are able to exceed our goal of ten thousand dollars for the Brady family. Thank you for all those who came out and supported Gavin in this fight against cancer. PTHS is still selling bracelets for anyone who is interested. Emily will finish the rest.
As winter sports come to a close, spring sports are starting up next week on March ten. Good luck to all our spring, spring sport athletes. We wish you the best of luck on your upcoming season. Congratulations to Luke Lawback and Nicole Chavez for winning Mister and Misses Paquonic. Thank you for all those who came out and for NHS for organizing the event. The guidance counselors have been meeting with juniors to help them start planning for their future and getting them prepared for their senior year. They have been going over colleges, SATs, class recommendations, and more. There is a college fair this Thursday for juniors and sophomores to attend. Students are taking the SAT this Saturday here at PTHS. All juniors will be taking the NJGPA, which is the Graduation Proficiency Assessment, March tenth through March fifth, March thirteenth. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thanks for the report. Now, will you be taking the SAT on Saturday? All right, and you know the drill. Do your best, try your hardest, have fun. Make sure you have a good guest letter going in and use the guest letter every time you draw a blank. Use the same letter every time. Law of averages are on your side. But I know, I know you'd be well-prepared for it. Just go out there and crush it, and know you have multiple chances to take the test. So if the first one doesn't go great, just super score it and you'll be fine. Excellent. Well done. Thank you, girls. All right, then for, for my report, I'm going to mix up how I originally had it mapped out. I'm actually going to go with the not-so-great part first and then finish with the good part last. I, I had that mixed up before. But actually, there's, there's a good side to it, too. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Gibbs, his team in the business office, and the administrative team for the hard work and balancing the preliminary budget. We're going to be presenting that officially on March thirteenth, which is our next board meeting after this. The work for that's difficult and made more challenging by the reality that costs are rising significantly faster than our revenues. His team worked very hard, worked hard all year to maintain austerity and was particularly diligent on Friday after we got our state numbers. So we worked feverishly to find savings and efficiencies. And just to frame it, our revenue is, for all intents and purposes, capped at two percent, which I can fully support as a taxpayer in North Jersey. The struggle comes from the absence of caps on our costs. It'd be great if all of our costs were capped at two percent, but they're not. Staff salaries are not limited to percent increases, nor should they be. That would be ludicrous to propose in this economy. Health insurance costs have been jumping by double digits seemingly every year. Reeling wage increases are not capped, nor are materials and supplies. This is not meant to be a doom and gloom presentation, but in my limited mathematical capacity, I am aware that if one side keeps increasing by more than two percent and the other one does not, ultimately, it comes to a head. And this is something that literally every district in New Jersey is dealing with. And is my sincere hope that our partners down in Trenton are aware of this and will find ways to help to fix a very difficult situation involving appropriate school funding. So that was my negative side of things. On the more positive side of things, just to echo something that the girls talked, spoke about, as did Mr. Senick. Our game on Gavin basketball games were incredibly successful. Our girls hosted Villa Walsh on Thursday, February twentieth. I was in an AI team meeting at that point, and Mr. Blumer sent me a picture of the two teams wearing the orange T-shirts for warmups. And I was so inspired, I had to go down there and take a look. Not that I didn't believe his picture, but it was really great to see that in person. But they had another game on Saturday, the girls did, against St. Elizabeth's, who likewise wore the orange. That was on Saturday, the twenty-second. And then the boys played Roxbury on Friday, the twenty-first. And the community response was nothing short of incredible. We sincerely appreciate the support from our neighbors, from all three schools, who donned the orange as well. The outpouring is truly inspiring, as we look to share our strength with the courageous young man and his family. On a personal note, I participated in training with New Jersey School Boards during the weekend of February twenty-first through twenty-third. I was actually two hours late because I stuck around for the game on Gavin game. It was well worth it. But I went in my role as a new board member in Lincoln Park, but I'm happy to report that it proved to be incredibly useful for my role as superintendent here. Among other useful topics that were presented and discussed, communications training generated information about developing a district communications plan, which is something that we had discussed. Gave me a really good template for that, as well as a crisis communication plan. We're beginning the process of developing that crisis communications plan involving Mr. Shea, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Lucas, as well as Mrs. Aug. And we expect that that's probably going to be tied into a district goal for twenty-five, twenty-six. It's really important to have that thoroughly mapped out. I subscribe to the umbrella theory, which is that if you don't want it to rain, carry an umbrella. Similarly, if you don't want to experience crisis, I think the better your planning is, the less likely it is to occur. On Wednesday of last week, I was happy to make my annual visit to the Cedar Crest Retired Educators Club. I was happy to share the exciting news about what we're doing and accomplishing in the district, as well as being provided an opportunity to answer their questions on a variety of topics. I just have to say, it's an incredibly supportive group. They follow our district very closely through the principal newsletters, as well as through my weekly newsletters. And finally, this week, we're celebrating Read Across America Week, and I'm excited to be on schedule to read in all three elementary schools. And then next week, I'm looking forward to joining my friend Dr. Shaliri in making subs on March eleventh at the Jersey Mikes in Lincoln Park for a North Boulevard fundraiser. We aspire to unseat Mr. Reiner as the sub-making champion in the district. But we'll gladly settle for a really good turnout. So if you want to, if you want a really nice dinner and an opportunity to see us do our part to pitch in, that's going to be on Tuesday, the eleventh. Absolutely. Mark your calendars. That concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report or would you like to read the statement of compliance again?
Love that compliance. Good evening. On the board agenda this evening, there is a discussion on the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. The governor had his two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six state budget address, and the state aid for Paquonic Township for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year has increased by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The increase is based on the following. School choice state aid went down by two, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred due to the reduction in the number of students in the school choice program. Categorical transportation aid went up by seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine nine, as the transportation costs have increased. Categorical special, special education aid went up by four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, as our special education costs have increased significantly. Category for security aid went up by ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. It says security costs have also increased. And equalization aid went down by four hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. As the state has determined that the overall value of the homes in Paquonic, as well as the income of taxpayers, has increased to the point that the district is either equal to or equal to other districts or greater than other districts with respect to property values and household income. This has caused an elimination of the equalization age for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. Debt service has decreased, or excuse me, decreased by one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, as our debt has gone down. The preliminary budget for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year currently reflects a two percent increase in school tax. The total for the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget is fifty-five million, eight hundred and seven thou, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, which represents a three point two percent or one million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three dollar increase. The preliminary budget will be voted on at the, the March thirteenth regular board meeting. And finally, I just want to send out a reminder that we haven't, if you haven't submitted your financial statements, to please do so as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Moving on to open comment for public agenda items, there is no one here, so we're going to open that and close that and move into approval of the action items. And we're going to go to PMC first. I'm going to ask Michelle to please move the action items under PMC.
I would like to move PMC one six nine dash twenty-five through PMC one seventy-five dash. Second.
Any question or discussion? For Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Zegel?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney is absent. Mr. Pompeo is going to be late. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to CIS. Ms. Esposito, please move the item under CIS.
I'd like to move CIS sixty-eight dash twenty-five. Second.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Zegel?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney is absent. Mr. Pompeo will be late. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mr. Es, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then last up for the action items is FFA. Mr. Blumer, please move the item under FFA.
I'd like to make a motion to move FFA one twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Zegel?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney is absent. Mr. Pompeo will be late. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to our workshop discussion items. First up is PMC with four items, staffing update, preschool hours update, and a planning for schedule revisions to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and board goals for two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Senick, and I'm happy to say we have Dr. Shaliri here, who's developed a presentation regarding an update on the preschool hours change that we implemented for this school year. It was a pretty significant decision for the board to, to vote on, and we want to make sure that you understand what we're seeing and hearing from the staff, as well as observations about performance for the kids and a few unintended positive outcomes. So she'll, she'll manage most of the message, if not all of the message there. I know the first item is the staffing update. Two quick things to report on. One is that our new behaviorist is going to be starting on St. Patrick's Day. She had hoped to get in a little earlier, but she's got to finish up with a few, few students on her current caseload, which we fully support, and we're looking forward to having her start on Monday, the seventeenth. Also, we have a French slash ESL vacancy that's coming up at the end of the month. Dr. Akif is currently working with an agency to make sure that we have adequate staffing for that position. One thing I will bring up, I guess this is part of the doom and gloom portion of my week, is that it's becoming incredibly difficult to staff French instruction. And I'm not saying we're going to, we're going to mail it in on this one, but I think we're, we're seeing throughout the state, as well as locally, that we may be seeing the end of in-person instruction for French coming sooner than later. It's hard to say that, especially as somebody who took French in high school, but it's simply becoming impossible to staff. So we do have, we have something in place that we know will carry us through the end of this year. We have an option available for next year. These are short-term fixes. I prefer to have something long-term, but I just want to put it out there. I know it's an unpopular thing to remove any language instruction. But I think circumstance is greater than I may be at play in this one. Any comments, questions, concerns about that?
Yeah. How popular is the French program? Do we have a lot of students in there?
It's, it's not, and it's a great question, Tim. I don't have exact numbers for it. French has been more of a niche language through the years, so generally you'll see students, you know, in eighty to twenty, if not greater than that, tending and trending towards Spanish. And it's, French has thrived through the, through the years here in terms of enrollment. But considering the fact that last year the state provided, I believe, was seven new certs for world language instruction, not for French, not for Spanish, world language instruction total, that's somewhat of an ominous, ominous, I guess, message that doesn't augur well for, for language instruction. A very long-winded response to a pretty easy question. I don't have the exact numbers, but yeah, French has never really flourished in comparison to Spanish, but it's been, it's been robust enough to sustain a class level. Per level. That's second item, and for this one, I'll have either Aldo or Mr. Shea put the presentation up on the screen behind us. Board members also have access to the presentation in backup. We put it in PMC, which I thought was appropriate based on, this is where our discussions took place for this item last year, so I figured this would be a good, good spot to keep it in. It could very easily have gone into CIS, as it also has things that are pertinent to curriculum instruction. But gives Dr. Shaliri an opportunity to be able to talk about what we're seeing in terms of changes to the program, which is, of course, housed at North Boulevard. We were very strategic to in wanting her to have a seat at the table, as opposed to presenting at the podium, so it could be more conversational. And I don't want to throw you off, Dr. Shaliri, but if, if things come up as she's speaking, don't feel like you have to wait to the very end. You can chime in and ask questions as we go. So I'll turn the floor over to you, my friend.
All right, thank you. As Dr. Portis said, about a year ago, we came to you doing a presentation. It really started from the year before that, when I had first arrived, and the preschool teachers had approached me about this new idea they had. Unfortunately, at the time, it was too late to change anything, so I agreed to hear them out at the beginning of the next school year. So the beginning of last school year, they presented this idea about how they would be able to get more instruction out of pretty much the same amount of instructional hours by taking some transitions out. And like Dr. Porter said, there were some unintended positive consequences for the school as a whole and for the preschool students. So when we did this last year, we, I went back through that presentation and pulled out the main goals from this change. And the change that we're referring to, for anybody who doesn't know, was preschool had gone from eight fifteen until two forty-five in prior years. What we did was we cut that back to, from eight fifteen to two o'clock, which allowed for a whole bunch of other things to happen, as I'll go into. But basically, the teachers wanted more times for tools of the mind and less time lining up at the door, going to a class, coming back, having to pick up where they left off. And being that they are in a K to five school, I had to work their special schedules around the K to five special schedules, which made it a little tedious. Sometimes specials were at naptime, sometimes specials were at inconvenient times when they were playing. So this, one of our other goals was fewer transitions, and we had some students in the preschool disabled classes who really, they would cry every time they transitioned. So the teacher would lose a lot of time with that as well. This also, the goal was to allow for additional collaboration between teachers, because then at two o'clock every day, the teachers didn't have a prep earlier in the day, so they would all have their, and they do have their prep at two o'clock, so they meet pretty regularly. And I'll go into the more specifics. And then the other positive for the school, for the K to five part, was there was going to be additional time in the special schedule to then offer enrichment at lunchtime, like is done in some of the other schools. So I'll go a little bit more into each of these. So the positives right now, I did go back to the teachers. I asked them. I took each of the questions and the bullets from the last presentation, and I said, fill in anecdotally where we're at and anything factual. Anything data, if you have anything. A lot of it is really just anecdotal. But for the most part, everybody is really happy with the new schedule. They have uninterrupted play blocks. Every teacher doesn't, their schedule doesn't get dictated by when they have gym or when they have music. Their schedule is dictated by what works for them. They set up their own schedule for what they need. So some preschool disabled classes need more of this thing or that thing, whereas maybe the preschool integrated classes need more of that versus this. There's more time to differentiate the instruction. The teachers have more time to sit down with the students, and they're not getting, all of a sudden, they're in the middle of ten minutes into a play block. Okay, everybody put everything down, and you can imagine what, everybody's tried to get their children to stop playing at some point. So you can imagine what that's like with some three and four and five-year-olds. So that was difficult, but right now they can just keep on playing, and there's more time for the teachers to work with the students, because they're not spending the time trying to get the students to stop playing, lining up, and then coming back. Like I said, there's also, in that is the fewer transitions. Students have more self-regulation, because they can follow the same routines every day. It's not a different routine, a different schedule every single day. And then the specials push into the classroom, and we tried a couple of different methods for that at the beginning of the year. I tried to schedule all the classes to make sure it was even and make sure this class had this many gyms and this many that. But in the end, I didn't know what their schedule was. So after the first month's schedule, they said, can you just tell us what the periods are that are available and we'll figure it out? So what they do is every month, they set up this, the schedule. We already have the open blocks where the specialist teachers have that push in time. And the teachers go through and they sign up for those blocks for where it works for them. So the PSI teachers who may have more morning students and afternoon, they try to make that even, sorry, they try to make that even. And the, the teachers who are working on a project, maybe this month they're working on something art-related. Maybe they'll sign up for an extra one with Mrs. Drier for art, whereas next month they might sign up for something extra with Mr. Vavino. And so far, all of the preschool, all of the specialist teachers have reported positively on this, because at the beginning, they sat in and they watched the routine, so they understood the routines of the classroom. And then as time went on, I would start to poke my head and, and see, all of a sudden, I'd see, the other day, I, Mrs. Felts had up this beautiful lion picture. And, and I, I said to her, I was like, oh, my goodness, I took two steps in the doorway. I was like, that's amazing. You're using forks to do something with paint. And I saw Mrs. Drier on the other side of the room. She goes, well, we've had help. So I can see how the classroom, what they were doing in the classroom is being enhanced. Some of the preschool integrated classes, I've noticed them going down the hallway to the library. They're kind of getting an introduction to the library, because they can handle that in their schedule. And they work out the time that works with them and Ms. Meyerson's schedule. The other positive is that since the specialist teachers are pushing into the classroom, there's appropriate-sized furniture for students. You know, in the art room, we have K to five size furniture, which for kindergartners is a little big, for fifth graders, might be a little small. But for preschoolers was way too big. So just the fact that they're at tables and chairs their size and their feet are on the floor just kind of makes a big difference as well. They also, because of, they're making up their own schedules, they do have more time for outdoor play, which this winter was not so great. But in the fall, when we had no rain ever, we had a lot of time to go outside and play. If we are able to get that new preschool playground at some point with all the grants and the things that we're doing with that, that will be a huge plus, because it's in that courtyard that a lot of the preschool classes share. For the teachers, it's a lot more collaboration. They have monthly meetings with, with Ms. Bronco, the preschool case manager, and all the teachers together. Weekly, they do meet on their own and probably more than weekly, because I always see them in, in one another's classrooms. The biggest thing I think I've seen a difference with is that we have more students kind of crossing over from the preschool disabled class to the preschool integrated class. And a lot of that happens, because they're not just catching each other in the hallway when they're leaving or coming for the day. They have two o'clock to go down and be like, oh, this is working in my schedule and, and what works in your schedule. So more opportunities for those small snippets where there's more time, and it's not like you are out at your gym special that day, and I'm out at my this special at this time. So we never have time for that one student who just needs maybe one block of play to have that integration opportunity. So we've seen a lot more of that. Meetings, a lot of the meetings for preschool are held at two o'clock. So the classroom teachers are not pulled from their students when they go in these meetings, because every time you have an ID meeting, an annual meeting, or an initial evaluation meeting, you have to pull a special education teacher and a regular education teacher. That would mean Ms. Monaco or Mrs. Rubino would have to be pulled for almost every single preschool meeting. So now it's happening at the end of the day, and we have, yes, every teacher is available at that time. And that's, that's helpful for the kids to have their teachers more. There are more integrated, like I mentioned already, there's more integrated opportunities, because of the schedules, we can better align them. I've seen a couple of students go down and have playtime with another class, and they just kind of are becoming a little bit more of their own world, rather than each of their six isolated worlds.
I should chime in. One thing I really liked about that, and I know Mrs. Esposito, I'm getting into a realm that you know incredibly well. We want to push kids towards the least restrictive environment. That, that's part of the point of the IEP. So when I'm hearing about more opportunities from students from the preschool disabilities program, to go into a less restrictive environment in the PSI room, it tells me they're getting closer towards mainstreaming opportunities, which has served so many benefits, not only for the students in the PSD program, but also students in the PSI program. It builds empathy, it builds teamwork, and it builds advocacy. So that was not, I'm not going to say I had a favorite bullet point from this, but that was one that really, that really connected with me, and I'm really proud of that.
And I actually just recently also saw a form that were, is about to be sent home with some of the PSI students, asking them if they would be a leader and go into the, the PSD class and play with those students to be, we're called, we would call them a leader, but you know, they're really just a really good role model for those students, so they get that opportunity. And I, in the two years I've been there, I don't ever remember that being a conversation, just because the schedules were so hectic.
Let me just jump in before I continue. So I went back and looked at the presentation from last year in preparation for this, and I was thinking to myself, this seems like it answers a lot of those questions. Now I know why.
Yes.
You did the same thing. But the one thing that I saw in there was that there was going to be more of an opportunity for outdoor play and integrating the classes, kind of like you had said, Dr. Porter. So I'm, I'm glad to see that that's something that's actually come out of it. Because from being next to Mrs. Esposito for all these years, that's been something that's been stressed, as far as like the integration between all the different types of kids to help them all grow together. So I'm glad to see that that's something that was supposed to come out of this, and that's something that is coming out of this.
Yes, I, I agree. It was kind of like, and although we expected it was like an unintended, unintended large consequence, positive consequence. So we've also gained enrichment opportunities in the school. So Ms. Meyerson, because she doesn't, she probably had the most preschool classes in the previous years, which also she did not have, we had low furniture, high furniture. So now we have all one-size furniture. And she is able to have Reed Sess, which is indoors, opportunities for indoor. And she is able to have recess, which is um indoors uh opportunities for indoor recess. There are students that there was Lego structures, they have little contests with the Legos, there's magnet tiles, there's board games, there's chess, you know, along with chess and things like that, card, a lot of Uno being played. That opportunity for indoor recess is also in the gen- general education, the regular classroom, but some students enjoy, even when it's indoor recess in the winter, they want to remove themselves from the louder environment and be in the smaller environment. Sometimes maybe they just want to go in there and read and I, it's every time I walk in there, there's just kids like playing and reading, which is you, I don't know, as a parent, it's just so, it makes me so happy to see kids playing and as a principal. Um, and then it also, those social skills that we just, you know, always work on and we're more aware of now that they really need to work on. The given, the take of playing board games is is a big deal that we don't always get the opportunity to do. In art, grades two to five, because the way the schedule is, um, are offered art enrichment each week. She has schoolwide projects. There's a quilt kind of a thing in the front of the building. That looks beautiful. And there were decorations for the winter dash. Then I all of a sudden they appeared and I was like, where are these coming from? And it was from the art enrichment. So there's a lot of things where, you know, Mrs. Drew will tell me, oh, we're, I think we're going to work on this project. It would be okay if we added this to that. And and it's just, it's like come out of the woodwork is something that I just didn't even expect. Like I knew we would have these opportunities, but I didn't think of it as enhancing the school as well. It's, but it helps the students as well as the school. Um, in music, Mr. Vavino is very excited. He um only has a few periods available because he, you know, does spend some time at the other schools. But students in grades two to four, he, I walked in one day and there's students like coatings, composing something and other ones learning a new instrument like guitar that they may not have the opportunity to do otherwise. They were re, um, I think they were uh rerecording one of the school songs so that that could be updated um as like a guide. And then um, there is one extra gym period that is available. So Ms. My, um, Ms. O'Hara has done a great job of rotating among the classes. She'll have you know, all the fourth grade classes in there, playing kickball against one another, friendly competition. And it also, the bonus of that, another unintended consequence is then you know, about once a month, once every six weeks, the teachers have an extra prep time uh to collaborate together. So that's a big deal too. And she'll even here and there try to juggle her schedule around if she can, so that if she knows that there's a big project in this grade, you know, she'll work around it. So that has all been a big plus. And then, you know, I can tell you anecdotally that I feel as though that recess and lunchtime is a little less stressful. But I also went back in and looking my data mind, I went back into my um parent communication log and I found seven instances last January in twenty twenty-four. Seven different situations that I had to call parents on, not just seven different parents, but seven situations in the month of January. I went back through this January and there was one. So I feel like all of this has made such a big overall contribution to the school that I'm just grateful that it was able to help, you know, really truly preschool through fifth grade.
And something I I'll tie into that as well. Some firm believer that the better people feel about the place where they are, the better they're going to perform. Um, and I had a conversation with Mr. Hazler at a couple of different events we've had here, where he said, you know, I I know this doesn't connect to test scores. Like absolutely it does. Like, because everything that you do that creates that better environment is going to contribute to student performance, whether it's measured in test scores, whether it's measured in attendance, whether it's measured in fewer disciplinary referrals. But you create culture and an environment where people want to be there and and they and they feel connected to it and they therefore feel better about it. So I I'm really excited about this. And I had a nice opportunity the night of the winter dash, admiring some of the decorations about which you spoke, but also to talk to some of the parents and get a sense for their energy for how excited their kids are for the opportunities they have for enrichment. So some really good stuff there.
It's been a big plus. And I also told the teachers when they were um responding to me that I wanted to know also, like what are, what what are the unintended negative consequences? Like what you, anytime you do anything new, there's something that comes out of the woodwork that you don't realize is going to happen. So one is, and they all said, this is, these are minimal things. These are things they can work around. It's not, you know, it's not game changing. But you know, uh, because when the students are dismissed at two o'clock, sometimes their parents have those meetings. They may not have alternative babysitter plans. So sometimes the students are in the annual meetings while the they're conducting them. So sometimes it's a little bit of a distraction, but you know, they work around it and Ms. Cohen does a good job with that. The related services staff, because all of the meetings are at two o'clock, the related services staff doesn't necessarily always have preps at two o'clock. So they sometimes have to reschedule those students for their three to one weeks and and work around that. Again, they said, it's not a huge big deal. It's just something that they noticed that they didn't expect to have happen. The parking lot, it's kind of a mixed thing. Um, we have staggered dismissal times. We have a ten forty-three dismissal for morning kindergarten. We have a two o'clock dismissal time for preschool. We have a two forty-five dismissal time for Ms. Guerrero and Ms. Moser's classes. And we have a um, a uh three o'clock dismissal time. So the parking lot is staggered. So one would think that that would help things. However, the North Boulevard parking lot really is so jammed up and so tiny that anything, you know, one day we had um parents coming in to throw a shower, a baby shower for a teacher, four extra cars in the parking lot. And apparently people were double and triple parked at preschool dismissal. We try really hard. We're kind of locked into when we can do um, you know, drills and fire drills and things, whole school assemblies because you know, we have lunches from ten fifty-four until one twenty-four. And then one twenty-four comes and then two o'clock comes real fast. So um, if we have all school assemblies, we would have to have them somewhere between um like eight forty-five and ten forty-five in the morning. So we work on that. So that way we don't jam up the parking lot at two o'clock. So we're we're learning. But I do, I have here and there, I've had, you know, a complaint about the parking lot, but I think it's just a general North Boulevard parking lot complaint and not necessarily anything that's unique to changing the time on preschool. And that is everything.
Just a a quick question. I'm sorry. Just can you for the related service makeup, so you're just talking about when there is an IEP meeting, right?
Yes, when there's an IEP meeting.
So it's, it's not like related services are working on a regular basis.
Yes.
In within that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
That looks, it's amazing. Thank you for your hard work and collaboration.
It's all the teachers.
Yeah, Dr. Shalira, I just also wanted to add that I think you guys have been incredibly creative with everything, incredibly. Um, super impressive. And I have sort of a unique perspective because I have a preschool disabled student myself and I lived, uh, he's a second year preschool disabled. So he lived through it last year and now he's living through it this year. And I see a tremendous difference in him. Um, he comes home with ton more energy. So the transition piece, I think, is huge. No, 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 we like it. He goes out and plays on the new playground afterwards. So it works. It's, it really does work. He's just coming home a different kid. Um, so for him, transitions was a big thing. So I was very excited for this and I see a huge difference in him. So
Glad to hear that.
Appreciate you and your team.
I was gonna ask, we had any parent feedback, but we just got some right there. So and there you go. That's the answer to the question.
And just on a total side note, Mr. Shea made fun of me because he pointed out how colorful the presentation was, which meant I clearly had nothing to do with it. Which is, which is true, but I I enjoyed it so much because I felt the content was so, it was so rich and it was great to, as you said, this came from your staff. You you've played a pivotal role in it, as has Ms. Bronco. But to hear the response from your staff about what they've been able to do, very exciting. And I will not make presentations that look like this, but I really like this.
I can help if you need.
Anybody else? All right. Want to talk about the district calendar? Thank you, Dr. Shalira. Great job.
Do you want me to give you the French numbers?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
I just did some math real quick. So back to the French. So we have um at the middle school, we have eighty students, which is seventeen percent of the students taking the language um compared to um three hundred and eighty-five taking Spanish. Then at the high school, we have fifty-four students taking French compared to four hundred taking Spanish. So um it's overall, it's about um fourteen and a half percent if you put them all together.
So, not that I want to. Why not? Let's go there. Um. Are they, is the number down for French because it's French? Would they take something Chinese, Italian, sign language instead if there was, if it was all first?
Down per se, I think it's just.
Well, compared to twenty years ago, way down. Oh. I mean, they had three, you know, how many French classes, right? Yeah, it's on.
I would have to do research for this.
No, I know. I'm just, yeah.
I can say like French four has eleven students.
Yeah, it's not.
Whereas we have a French, I mean, a Spanish four with a hundred and four, and we have a Spanish five.
Right.
So by the time they're going through, like the middle school, they.
Like it started in middle school and then it kind of.
And then that kind of dies down.
Or.
And since high school is where we're looking at the French. Yeah, that's.
Even, would you even consider bringing back Latin instead of French? Latin.
Those are the only two languages we all prefer. Yeah, and th- there's, there's been a perception that um that French is more difficult, which I don't know that to be true. It's just that's been a perception. And I know when when I was in high school, it was seen as being more appealing to students who were spending more time in the library and less time at social engagements. Which is why I took it. But, but yeah, it's just, it it is a different language. It's very, very similar to Spanish, but yeah. I find it very appealing, but it's not, it's not universal among our students to the tune of about fourteen and a half percent of those who take languages. All right. Thank you for that, Mrs. Vancecall. Um, and then third item to get back to the agenda is uh the planning for possible two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five calendar revisions. I am, as many of you know, very superstitious. So this is uncomfortable for me to discuss, but we do have three snow days still in the bank, which quite pleased about. Um, we will be giving those three snow days back. Uh, I was advised I cannot have a one hundred eighty-three school day year, which I would love, but I was told I can't do that. But what I'm hoping to be able to do is um break up how we determine which days are the give back days. I would like to take one as my prerogative um and then allow for the seniors to vote on a day, which is something I've done since two thousand twenty. And then also provide the staff an opportunity to cast a vote for a day. So we would give them a list of days that are possible, based on testing, based on other logistical things, field trips and whatnot, about what days could be available. And with three, there's not, there's not a ton of options.
You don't want to maybe go out to Facebook and ask them their opinion?
Wait, what?
I'm totally joking. No, I think the the plan you have, good plan.
I think.
I agree one hundred percent.
And the the day I, in 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 the spirit of full disclosure, the day I would love to be able to give back is April twenty-first, which is day after spring break. And I know uh the twentieth is each Sunday, which is a huge travel day. I think that would be a nice one, but um we could approve any changes as soon as March thirteenth. I would recommend if we, if we do have any inclination to do a date in either April, well, in April, to approve that on the thirteenth, give people advance notice and then maybe wait till April seventh or the other dates, which I hope that staff and students vote for those that bookend Memorial Day. Not that I'm trying to skew the vote.
I I would also agree with that. Remembering that we had a snowstorm a couple of years ago. I think it was it was late March, wasn't it?
I I was still a principal. Yeah, we we had, it was it was about, it was one of those sixteen inch type storms.
Like March twenty-eighth or something like.
I don't know if it was that late, but we we've, we've gotten it. I mean, the good thing is with the March storms or April storms that just as soon as they're here, they're usually gone. But when they're here, they're they're pretty disruptive. So I don't, yeah, I don't want to tell everybody, hey, you can plan for a five day Memorial Day and then say, I was just kidding because if March are predictable.
If we did, if you did pick the three days and something happened, you would just take the one off the end of the year back first? Or designate them somehow or?
Yeah. So you would, you would just, uh, it's almost like you have to couch it. So like, let's say we give back and I don't have the calendar in front of me, but we gave back May thirtieth and May twenty-sixth. And we get some surprise storms, tell people, well, you're you're coming to school on May thirtieth and May twenty-sixth now. So it'd be unfortunate, but I mean, the reality we live in in North Jersey. So I'll, I'll, I'll plan to um communicate with the board about possibly approving a day um at the March thirteenth. And then look to get the other two days um approved on April seventh. And I'll work with Mr. Hazler about surveying the seniors and then also uh I could probably manage the survey for the staff. Good stuff there. It's nice to be able to talk about that. I know a couple of weeks back, there was a ten day forecast that looked like snow again, where I thought it was going to blow through all three days in one week. Nope, did not materialize thankfully. Then finally, um, I is an item there that's in PMC. When it gets approved, it'll actually be a board effectiveness committee item, but for the sake of communication and community relations, the uh board goals were developed at the board retreat, which was, I still say, the most successful retreat. I've been a part of my twelve years as an administrator here. But the board goals are in backup. Um, the board is going to have a fourth goal. Which speaks to a wider range of focus items and fourth one's actually very manageable. But um they should be approved at the March thirteenth meeting and then will be posted online thereafter. I don't know if there's any discussion or comment, commentary about board goals.
Yeah, I thought they looked good too.
Excellent. Yeah, and those will, and those will help to frame the district goals that we generate in July. So sooner we can get them up, the better. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll have those approved at at the meeting on the thirteenth.
It was exactly as we had discussed during the retreat. Right? The goals. There was, I mean, you just worded it much nicer than we did. Thank you.
All right. I I believe that one of the board members wants to replace me with AI. So I'm trying to keep that down as best I can, you know, with my writing skills, not not replace me entirely. So if I get a chance to show off a little bit, I still got that.
All right. Moving on to the workshop for CIS. There's four items, update on the STEM Aviation Academy to the Ascend Academy. Uh, the NJ GPA testing week next week, the March fourth PD day and the SAT prep course. And if we did make a bot named after you, we'd call it like Eddie Vedder or something like that.
And and I'd appreciate that. I I do feel like, yeah, the the AI is probably cooler than I am. Um, and if you can give it a really cool name, then I'll, I'll be fine with transition. My my time will come.
So I'm going to not go long. These are actually really quick updates. Um, so on the STEM Aviation Academy to ascend, uh, we just wanted to give a very brief update. Um, we're working on, um, we've got the curriculum going for a couple of new courses, including data science and cybersecurity, which I'm excited about, as well as an additional robotics course, which will be different than the other robotics course we have, as well as um AP Comp Sci A. We have AP Computer Science Principles right now. So we're adding AP Computer Science A and those will be wrapped into the academy as well. We did, Mr. Cop and I did uh a long meeting last week, just kind of trying to talk about the pathways that students could take. And so we're really working hard to explore students having choice while all students might end up taking um the intro to basically the two introduction courses, Intro to Aerospace and Intro to the Engineering. But then they also have a computer science course. From there, we're looking at how we can make the pathways go. So the students can have um touch points and different ones depending upon their interest versus being stuck with a four course pathway um through the whole time. So um, just wanted to give a little bit of taste of that. We're moving forward on this and we're working on curriculum for the um courses. Next. Emily Ziegler told you my update. We have NJ GPA testing next week, March ten to the thirteenth. ELA two days, math two days. And I just wanted to let you know.
And you do realize that we set the bar pretty high for ELA last year.
Yes, we did. That's I I, it's either me or not. That's when you have a hundred percent, you really can't go much further. Any questions on testing? Awesome. We're also working on NJ SLA stuff coming up in May. March fourth tomorrow, we have our last half PD day of the year. Um, two particular things, we have consultants coming in um from the outside for MTSS, big huge training for K to five staff, interventionist counselors on um multi-tiered systems of support, how that works with um interventions, IR and RS. So that should be a good session tomorrow. I'm very excited. We actually, um, while the the staff during the PD um from one forty to four fifteen will have all that, they'll also be here in the morning from nine thirty to twelve thirty, working with the interventionist counselors and admin team. So I'm excited for the work we'll do there. We also have uh creative language coming in to work with our world language staff on in Spanish for this particular thing. So they're coming in from outside to help us um do a better scope and sequence um and help our our teachers do some really strong vertical articulation, starting in the middle school through the high school. So that'll be a good one. Questions on tomorrow? Excellent. Um, and finally, um, we are using Title One funds to put together an SAT prep course. And uh, we. And uh we reached out um to um particular, um, we sent out emails to particular students over the weekend. Already have eighteen students signed up. We think we can take forty. Um, what we're looking to do is have um seven, seven sessions ahead of the May SAT exam. So one a week um for seven weeks. Um, we're looking to do two hours at night where um, we have ELA for an hour and math for an hour, and the students can swap sessions. So um we're trying to, to make it as accessible as we can um to the students. Um, and as I said, we're using Title One funds for that, so that's good.
So who is eligible for that course?
So um when you, when you use Title One funds, you have to identify particular criteria. So we started with the ninth and tenth grade NJSLA scores in uh below proficient to identify students that we would invite, um, as well as um other things like our multilingual learners and um just a couple of different criteria. Um, you know, we could look at grades and like things like that. So we identified our particular group. We can only take forty. We don't have, um, we're, we're looking at that number. Classroom size, you know, making it right now. So um, so a bunch of different criteria we looked at to identify, but we're gonna open it up as well, um, following that to um again, fill the class, so.
Okay. It would be like a three-year below or two-year below?
Um, depends. Yeah, I, I don't want to just say it's one particular one, because there's, yeah, there's, you know, different criteria that we're gonna use and different factors. But the NJSLA scores from ninth grade um are a piece of what we're looking at.
Okay, and then um, so if those students don't, don't take the course, then it gives you opportunity. You'll go to like the next level of qualifications.
They might have, they might have already even sent out a second wave of emails today. In order to reach out to everyone. So it's just, but because it's Title One funds, we obviously have to have criteria first um to try to service the students that are at risk or whatever.
Did you, did we get, did you get a, a good amount of kids saying yes from the first wave or?
Almost twenty.
Okay, awesome. All right. That's fantastic.
Yeah.
That's a, a great way to use Title One funds, I think.
I agree. And, and.
My opinion.
Well, it, it's, it's a really sound opinion too, and this is something I'm really excited about. Um, I know we, we had talked about it when I was doing the PSAT slash SAT prep night, and it's something that we've had in the school district through private vendors, which I say because I, I used to be one of those private vendors, um, before I actually started teaching here. And, and it's great to get kids more aware of, of what's on the test. And you can definitely build their enthusiasm because as you demystify the test, the kids start to get more of a can-do attitude about it. And as, as a teacher, and again, I, I joke about my, I call them nerdish leanings. But I used, as a teacher, I used to get really excited working with kids to help prepare them for the test because you could see quantifiable gains. And, and you, and you could definitely sense that, that um excitement for them. So I, I, I think what we're doing here is fantastic. I love that we're tapping into the Title One funds. And I, and I'd like to see this as something that we can really grow. Um, to, to build, yeah, to build a culture of the school of making sure that our kids are as prepared for every assessment that they might face. And so this is, to me, it's a new beginning and I'm really excited. And I appreciate your vision with this, uh, Mrs. Vancecall.
So I'm going to pass the credit to Chris Foglio and to Lexi Blau at the high school, um, who were like, Amory, like they pulled me in, they're like, we need to put this together. So um I would say between the three of us, we kind of made the vision for it together. Um, but I do think it's important also that um um, students who might not necessarily, if we just put an SAT course out there, students who might not necessarily think they could take that course, um, you know, making special invites where we can to students, be like, no, you can all do it. Like, like, we want to pull you all in. I think it's important to reach out and, and try to get them.
I also think that historically in the his, in the high school, we've had difficulty getting the students to take advantage of the Title One programs, right? Because it used to be like the tutoring before school, the tutoring after school.
Correct.
This is a great way to really um highlight that, that like Title One service, um, because these kids are looking for SAT prep more than just tutoring, I, in my opinion.
And you get a different, um, you get a different energy in a, in a class from what you get in, in one-to-one tutoring. And it's nice because the, the kids kind of feed off each other. And it's good for them to see their peers getting excited about the possibility of improving their performance. It's not all sunshine and lollipops. I mean, there are times when it can be dull, but overall, I think it's gonna be a great experience. And I, to, to say it again, I'm really excited for it.
Anything else on that? Alright.
Uh, before we move on to CIS, can we just recap the coast? Did you have any more questions about the Costa Rica trip? Did anybody have any questions before we have to vote on it for next week?
I'll tell you that I, I did have questions on it, and the information I received from Dr. Portis today was basically answered all my questions, like every single one of them. So it looks like a great trip, and uh it looks like additionally, the information that was put out covered basically anything that I think apparently would have a question on.
Amazing, thank you.
Alright, going on to FFA, three items. Uh, the preliminary budget, the proposed new facility at Seven Industrial Road and the softball dugout. So we'll start with the budget.
Uh, in your board packets, you should have received a copy of the budget summary. Uh, in the budget summary, it gives a breakdown as to the operating budget, which is going to be going up over two million dollars, which represents a three point nine four percent increase. We're putting through a reduction in um grants and entitlements, uh, using the rule of conservatism. Uh, you're not supposed to pick up a hundred percent of prior year's grants because you never know if you're gonna be receiving the same thing next year. So that was a reduction based on sixteen point six one percent or two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The repayment of debt went down, obviously, because we were paying off our bonds, which is a very good thing. And that went down seventy-one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which represents a five point six seven percent reduction. So overall, the budget's going up uh one million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand three dollars, which represents an overall increase of three point two percent. Um, the same with the appropriations. I mean, the same numbers exactly because that's the way the, the funds flow. General fund is uh going up three point nine four percent. Special revenue is going down sixteen point six one. The debt service is going down five point six seven, which leaves three point two percent increase in overall appropriations. As mentioned prior, uh, earlier, excuse me, the tax or the bank, excuse me, the tax levy is going to be owing up seven hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and five dollars, which represents a two percent increase in the tax levy. The increase in state aid is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, which I previously discussed how it was broken down by each category. And after that, there is the increases in salaries, which is a three point five percent increase or two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Benefits went up four hundred and sixteen thousand, which is six point two percent increase. Uh, other insurances went up forty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which represents a ten percent increase. Uh, utilities, five thousand twenty-three dollars. Uh, transportation is going up seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand dollars. And tuition for added district placements is going up six hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which represents an almost thirty percent increase. Six hundred and thirty-four thousand. Uh, so basically that in a nutshell is the numbers as far as our budget for next year. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Uh, just a general question. Things that are going up twenty, thirty percent, like what is going on? I mean, we're not talking about eggs here. You know, like you, two percent, five percent, seven percent. Okay. You said seventeen percent, you said thirty percent, you said twenty-something percent. Like what, what is, what is that? And I don't, not to you, but like, do we have a choice to go with somebody else? We have a choice with something else, or that's just what it is?
Well, it depends on what you're doing. I mean, some things you don't have control.
Right.
So you have to go with whatever your provider is telling you, you know? So if it's twenty-seven percent, hey, that's it. You know, try to make.
Maybe like health insurance goes up twenty-seven percent, we don't have a choice, that's it.
You don't have a choice. In the state plan, you don't have a choice. If you're in, yeah, once you're in, you're in.
So Gordon, Gordon, a couple of questions in, in line with what Sam is saying. Um, so the first thing is you have a reduction of sixteen point six one percent for the uh grants and entitlements.
Right.
And that's based on a conservative estimate. So my question is, first question is, is it possible that there could be no reduction there? Based on your conservative estimate, and that would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than we get?
Exactly, or more. That's what we're hoping for, but using the law of conservatism, you should not put through the exact amount that you receive or even give an increase.
Okay.
Assume that you may get less, and if you get more, it's, it's more in our pocket. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Gordon, when do we find that out?
Not until September.
September, thank you.
Second question is related to the, the bank's cap. So looking back at our prior budgets, it looks like we had at least like eight hundred grand bank cap that we could have spent from the last two years. Why are they not allowing us to spend that? Is there any reason why?
Yeah, what they're basing it on is health insurance. Okay, our health insurance costs, we budgeted eh too well last year. Because we really didn't have a, a deficit in our health insurance. We actually had a surplus. Because we budgeted a certain amount, it came in less, so we had a surplus, so that actually hurt us. So what you'll see this year, I've been budgeting a little less on our health insurance, knowing that it's gonna be higher. I'm not gonna get hit with, you can't use your bank cap for the following year.
That was gonna be the next question because you're allowed to, not that I want to increase the tax levy, but you're allowed to increase the tax levy for things like health insurance premiums.
Exactly.
So my next question was gonna be, why can't we go above it to pay for the, the six percent increase in benefits and the oh, ten percent increase in other insurances? Is it because we were so spot on last year that we kind of hindered ourselves for this year?
Yes, basically, yes. You get punished, yes.
How, how is, why? Like what, what? That makes no sense to me. Like, so let's say you got it right on, right? That means you budgeted the right amount of money, but it still went up six percent and ten percent, right? So if we can only levy two percent, is there a threshold that the state says if your health insurance goes up by more than this, then you can tap into it, and if it's below this, then you can't? And what is that percentage?
It's called a referendum. If you want to increase it above what your two percent that you're allowed, and you don't have a bank cap, you can go out for referendum to ask for more money. Okay?
I didn't think we needed to do a referendum when it was related to that.
Well, it doesn't be health insurance, could be your overall budget. Okay?
Option. And that a second question or a second?
Oh, you, you know, on the referendum, yes, because they had a first question, probably uh construction, right?
Alright, so then the last question related to bank cap, I mean, I don't know, I'm beating bank cap like it stole something, but it kind of did. Um. The money that we had since, but about half of it was two years ago and the other half was about last year. The fact that you can only use it for three years, does that mean we're losing the first half of it?
No, it gets carried forward. So it's carried forward to the twenty-six, twenty-seven this week.
Okay, so even though they're not letting us use it this year, they're still gonna let us use it kind of like for the past four years because we're gonna get that first year.
Depends on how we budget our health insurance, yes.
Okay.
It all follows through what's called Chapter Forty-four, which is a, a series of reports you have to uh provide to the state. Usually by the end, mid-December, it has to go out. And that gives you the determination as to what was your actual and what's your forecast. And they look at those two things to make a determination. Alright, hey, they actually saved money. So instead of panelizing the district, in their minds, you're thinking they're giving it back to the taxpayer. So the taxpayer doesn't have to pay more. That's, that's the rationalization that I perceive. Yeah, so. Any other questions?
One, one thing I'll just weigh in on too, um, obviously, the, the increase in the cost for added placements um is definitely a jarring number to see six hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, and that is um without knowing that that number was going to be that number. That was part of the motivation for looking to collaborate with some of our neighboring districts on possible placements for students who need programs that we don't provide. Um, if we, if we send somebody to Montville, it's a lot, it's preferable financially and to me, educationally um to send to another public school than to send to a private placement where we have no oversight, no guarantee the program um is gonna be any better, probably will not be any better, and virtually no input on, on costs, including transportation. So I'm, I'm hoping that that does bear fruit, and we, we are also looking at what types of programs we could possibly uh, offer not only to our students to help keep them in district, but also as a possible revenue generating program. So with that number where it is, it's, it's daunting, but it's not something we're gonna throw up our hands and say, oh, can't do anything about it. Um, obviously, we want to keep all of our students in district. There are some situations where you simply cannot. But we, we want to ensure that we're maximizing our resources, including our facilities, um, and looking at as many feasible options as we can.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got one more for you, and it's related to the agenda for next week. No, no, it's not about bank cap. I want you to read, no, kidding. Um, the playground. We have a withdrawal in the next agenda for about sixty-five thousand dollars for the playground potentially at Seven Industrial Road.
Well.
Double that.
It's, yes, I have, I have an exact quote now, and it's my tire.
So both of those quotes, you put them together, and that would be replacement for the sixty-five that's in there.
Yeah, you'll see it soon, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, the second item I have is uh the, the new facility. I just received the estimate, actually just this afternoon, as to what it will cost to have the current owner fix up the top floor, which is the board office plus the class or the offices that'll be moving from the second floor to the top floor. The total cost, and that also includes uh putting in one special ed cla, or one preschool classroom on that second floor. Because I figured if we are going to have a preschool, we need to get it started right away. So I asked him to include that in the cost. The cost is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which I shared with the board. Um, the second floor, or excuse me, the additional classroom is only seventy-five thousand. I say only seventy-five thousand because that is not using prevailing wage, which would more than triple that. So obviously, there'll be more discussion on this tomorrow night at our committee meeting, but um to me, I think that's a very conservative and very good estimate.
Can they do that though? Because it has to be DOE reviewed, the drawing. So can we have someone make a classroom without it being DOE reviewed?
Well, he could, yeah. There's nothing stopping it. It's his building. He can do whatever he wants. Right, we don't own it yet. We're not gonna own it until it's done, or at least that section is done, which gets us past the prevailing wage problem. You know, you understand what I'm saying, right? Um, so that's one piece that I received. The other thing I received was, uh, what is the, what is the revenue on this building? You know, and I just received his two thousand twenty-four um financial statement, which shows a net income of over ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, that's net income after all its expenses. The rents come in over two hundred thousand dollars. So it's in a positive cash flow, which is a very good thing. That's what we want. We don't want anything that's in a negative cash flow. Um, now, it will be slightly less because I understand one tenant is leaving, leaving, but it's a small tenant. I believe it's the CBA firms leaving, and there was only one office. So I'm not sure what that rent was, but that will reduce it slightly.
I think it'd be interesting to see what, because I'm looking at this financial statement. I see the two hundred grand of rent coming in, which I assume is just for the second floor.
Yes.
Because the third floor is nobody on it right now.
Exactly.
So if we took over the building and we put our offices on the third floor, and we continue to rent the second floor, we could potentially be infusing our district with two hundred grand every year. But I'd be interested to see which items on this list would chip away from that two hundred grand, because he has expenses on here too, that would take away from the rent. I'd be interested to see what that two hundred grand would, would, would be, what that would turn out to be.
Yeah, we can, I can work something up regarding that. There's another reason why I wanted that um preschool classroom on that, we'll say, second floor. Um, I had a conversation with um the town tax assessor. And he told me, basically, Gordon, until I see classrooms on that second floor, you're gonna be taxed on that floor. Okay, great. I'm gonna put in a classroom. Now I have classroom and I have our offices. Nobody's in them but the school. So I want him to remove that tax from that floor. So we only get taxed on just one quarter of the building, which is where the tenants are, which they're paying for. And we're not taxed on that second floor, and we're not taxed on the board's office. So that's, that was my big, one of my big reasons for having that additional classroom put in there, not only to save money, but also to save money on taxes. And the last thing I had was the um, the playground. The playground I have, I, I sent out to the board also an email, um, just to give you an idea as to what it would cost. And this playground, I understand, it's also um flood-friendly, I'm gonna say. It can handle a flood. I know that was a question, one of the question. It can handle a flood. I know that was a question and one of the questions in the the uh report that you're looking for, which will be affiliated for tomorrow night.
It looks like it's just anchored to a concrete slab.
That's all it is.
Which means it doesn't float away, essentially.
Are there any questions regarding the building at all?
Uh I just had a question. So um you'd mentioned how we're gonna do renovations before actually buying the building, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, we know for a fact that they're not gonna pull something on us, like we're not gonna be doing all those renovations and they're gonna egg, ah never mind, and sell it to someone else for a higher bid.
No, we will, we will be under what's called a capital lease. A capital lease with a right to purchase. Okay, capital leases at the end of the lease, we're buying it.
We're buying it.
During that capital lease, right. And in the lease, it states, July or August, whenever it's completed, if we're gonna buy it for the two point two million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, that's essentially said. Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and just to that too, the way it's been um sold to me, the way I've discussed it too, is that it's essentially what we're looking at are things that are preconditions to the actual purchase. So um the current owner has to present something that's satisfactory to the district in order for the sale to be executed.
Gordon, a couple more things related to the property. Um and we're gonna talk about this more tomorrow in our committee meeting, but we we now understand that the pre-K program costs more to run it than it does bringing money, right? How does expanding into the building and expanding the program into this building make that better or make it worse? Like, how does that work? Is it that we put more kids in there and then the percentage of the paying kids goes up? And and so before I keep asking any questions, so if if it is going to improve it, what percentage do you think it would improve it by?
Here's the thing, if we can bring students in from out of district, we can charge a much higher price and we will make money. Right now, we're losing money cuz we're basically giving away a portion of our tuition to parents who are sending their kids. If we have out of district placements, you'll make a lot more money, especially in special ed. When I was in Stanhope, that was a big deal. I mean, I brought an additional half a million dollars in revenue just in bringing in five kids from out of district. Yeah.
And we'd be able to have preschool disabled at that building?
I believe we can. I mean, it's the second floor. I don't think it's a problem. It's a preschool, so it's, it should be fine. And if not, we'll just move the the regular kids over to that building and keep the specialized kids in the North Boulevard.
The waitlist that we have now, how many of those people are from out of district?
Uh right now, I don't believe there are any. I think it's all just in district for the moment, but we haven't advertised out of district. Yeah, exactly.
But what I'm saying is, is it possible though that it fills up with all people from aquatic?
It's possible. Anything's possible, yeah. Exactly.
Dollars to educate a child of aquatic and we're charging eight thousand for preschool, you bring in twenty more kids, thirty more kids, you're losing X amount more dollars, right? Like, we're not making money. We also have to hope that we're gonna get the P, we'll be up for P. Well, I don't know what's gonna happen with the state of New Jersey, but the PAA, when that aid comes up, we have to be able to have the spots and that will pay for it. We'll be getting money to run the preschool program. So, I mean, and I mean tuition's free, but then you can also um allocate certain monies that we already have in our budget to go to the preschool program, which then you're you're getting, you're making a rev- not a revenue, but.
Yeah, the the my my opinion there is like, we we wanna see, at least I wanna see, the hard numbers of how that works because I just wanna be comfortable to make that decision because the numbers I'm seeing right now say that I could, we could buy a building. You could put a board office on top of it and fit it out for prevailing wage, and then you could continue to rent the second floor and you could make a substantial amount of money potentially every year that goes into our district at a point when we're losing state funding for things. So if there's a, if there's another uh alternate to that where we get preschool aid cuz of the expansion, then I just wanna see what that, what that, that looks like in terms of hard, hard numbers, that's all.
Well, there's only currently six tenants, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we can still fit those six tenants even with uh making the preschool the second floor and then having this tenants go on the third floor.
No, the board office is gonna be the third floor, second floor would be pre-K.
Yeah, but can we, I thought we had it.
But there're gonna be a couple tenants upstairs too.
It'd be five tenants upstairs.
Couple tenants, but so to me, again, I, just my opinion at this point, seeing the numbers, I'm seeing two hundred grand of income. I'm seeing a pre-K program that loses significant money. And I'm thinking to myself, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Here's your problem.
But we're also educating our students, which we're educating our aquatic students and we're keeping kids in district by having these programs, which outweigh, which is tremendous for those students and for our town and for getting, but if you run in a deficit budget for too long, at some point you can no longer run.
No, but that, again, I I agree with you. Everything you're saying is correct.
Gordon, do we know what neighboring?
Hold on a second. If we could continue to educate those kids and then get rent and then rent that covers the difference, then we get the best of both worlds.
Hundred. I'm behind you a hundred percent. We do need to sometimes, I, uh money is very, very, very important, but so is the educational component.
So Gordon, just a quick question. Is it a norm that preschools tend to run in deficit across the, across the state? Is it, it's not, it's not something that?
You'd be out of business.
Right, but I'm just saying, is is it, do we know any schools that have faces and have seen turnaround and there's a model to the success of it that we know of, or is it still just like something we are discovering ourselves and working through ourselves?
Well, I mean, I think we're working through ourselves. Other districts have higher tuitions on everything, right? We went over the tuition, you know, last board meeting. Um I don't know what their costs are, you know, I haven't heard an analysis on that, so whether they're making money or losing money, you know? My guess is that most of them are probably breaking even.
I was gonna say, it's probably a break even.
Yeah. Any other questions?
And just uh two things I just wanted to weigh in on too. We we have received inquiries from people from other communities about whether we do have availability in our pre-K and our response has been that we have to get through the entire waiting list of aquatic residents before we can offer it. Um and the the we just wouldn't be able to get to them. Um and one thing too, just about looking to have a revenue generating program. And and I think it is really important that we create something that's sustainable. I would love to be able to have um classes that are populated entirely by general education. Tuition-paying students because that that's, that that creates something that is i- is revenue generator where um with programs for students who don't have to pay tuition, obviously, um you you bear the cost of that because you you are bound morally, ethically, legally, call it what you will, to educate um all the children that you can. So th- there's a lot for us to figure out. It's something I did talk to um Mr. Gibbs about is when we do get closer to be able to have a cost benefit analysis, we can point to it and say, this is what we anticipate revenue is gonna be. And historically, our pre-K tuition was was very low and it's something that we've made incremental gains trying to catch up to competitive marketplace. Um that's something that on my end, I didn't want to do it all at once and tell people, hey, you like our program? I now pay twenty-three percent more. I thought it was more reasonable to do it incrementally. Um I also was not a business major, so do it that way you will.
And and I don't wanna make it look like I'm coming at you because I'm I'm totally not. It's just, I would, just like Dr. Porter said, I would like to see that projection laid out in something that's concrete and real, real numbers because it's I'm not even talking about buying the building. You could buy the building and you could still rent that floor and make a ton of money. So it's really about what do we do with that floor, which is really what our board goal is, figuring out what we do with that floor. And before I make a decision or make a vote, I wanna make sure I have all the information. That's all. And I appreciate you taking all the questions and you gave us a ton of information today and again, it's not the end of you. I just wanna have all the information so I can make a good decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I I would go along with what Brian's saying that I I'm not against anything or for anything i- in a sense that I I'm just uncomfortable with knowing that we're losing money on something that we would continue to possibly lose money on. What, how much would we have to raise the cost of the, you know, per year over the next eight, ten years so that we, I mean, and again, I'm not and I don't wanna say I wouldn't wanna make money. It'd be great to make money, but so that we could break even. Right? I mean, we're talking about things going up twenty-three percent. If healthcare is gonna go up twenty-three percent, how many people are gonna be working in over there? That's how many more employees that we need. How, you know, how there's gonna be repairs on this building after a couple of years. Elevators are gonna go, things like that.
Out of district places.
Yes. There's no tuition answer to that.
Right.
Because you're you're never gonna be able to charge what you need to do that. It's about bringing it out of placement. Now, we should have an idea though, like we say, we're gonna fill up with aquatic kids. We have always a good kind of sense of you know, we know what the waitlist is. I don't currently know, but we know, like as a district, we know. We know what we have today. We know how much room we're we're gathering. Um I mean, is it, is capacity actually something that we're seeing as a possibility or, I mean, I guess a concern, which doesn't sound like full capacity is a concern, but you know what I mean?
Right.
Do like, are we there yet? Do we know? Like, yeah, even if this waitlist and an additional twenty-five percent come in, we still have two classrooms worth of, you know, special needs that we could bring in. Like, do we know that yet?
The new facility can house ninety-six students. Well, I'm saying we could move some of our pre-K that we have in North Boulevard to that facility.
Right.
We could open up a classroom for special education children to bring in that tuition from out of district.
Right.
That's a lot of money.
Okay.
That will far surpass this, you know.
So there are two hundred thousand.
Right.
A year.
Far surpass, far surpass it.
Right, ninety-six, we're we're not gonna have ninety-six. Like, graduating class is barely ninety-six nowadays.
Right, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have room for.
Yes, we're gonna have room, okay.
Yeah, that's that's.
That's your answer, Sam.
Yeah, I think like Danielle said, one of the important things here that unfortunately Mr. Gibbs can't predict is the PEA. And uh that's like a roll of the dice right now. I mean, I I know districts that really thought they were gonna get it, worked with a consultant on their application, like it was a no-brainer and then boom, they didn't even get it. So um so I think it's, that's like one of the dice rolling things right here, but I will say as far as the 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 tuition uh increase goes, um I know we're gonna be continuing that conversation and committee, but um there is definitely no better time to increase the tuition because it goes along with the fact that our equalization aid is dropping and we're deemed, you know, um economically able to pay this bill. So this is actually the perfect time to up the tuition because I think it complements that.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the next item, um. You wanna take that?
Yeah, finally, finally something important to talk about. Um so the softball dugouts, uh obviously, we did renovations to the baseball and softball field. Um and you've heard me advocate, always uh always advocate for for girl sports, both township level and district level. As I was discussing, blue tarps are about to go up for the spring sports season. Um there, I had an idea. At SJJ, there are two unused prefab dugouts that are in very good condition and are actually very nice. Um I thought of this as a joint venture committee item that um Dr. Portis is gonna talk to Adam Brewer about in terms of repurposing those two fixtures. They're prefab steel. There would have to be some minor work done with our current fencing and things like that, but compared to the cost of something that we're not gonna be able to budget anytime soon in terms of like real dugouts or or construction unless it was in-kind donors. Um it could be a feasible option um to to repurpose what's just sitting there as two unused items that um I think the state, the town owns and that's, we do own it.
We know the town doesn't know.
Okay, so maybe it's not joint venture and it's just FFA. So either way, again, um I remember seeing them and and we're seeing like this could be a something here that can make a a big difference as curb appeal for for a much needed enhancement on the on the field. So just, that's the topic that I wanted to bring up and uh we'll kind of look into that, see what it costs.
Yeah, I actually talked to Mr. Anderson about that.
You did already, okay.
He said that they are welded, they're they're permanent and they're cemented into the ground.
Mm-hmm.
So to remove all that and to take it all apart, he said it would cost a fortune. It would cost you more to do that than just start from scratch.
Really? Oh, really?
Okay, that's interesting.
So Joe, I went down there cuz I thought it was a good idea. I went down to look at the next morning. Um it is totally welded. The the whole top of it, I was shocked, but it's all welded. Um the posts are, or the columns rather, are bolted into the ground, so I think you could take the post out, but then you have this structure, you have to just move because it's one piece, totally put together, thirty foot long.
Yeah.
Um. I think it would be a a large undertaking to move it, but I don't think it's not worth looking at.
Yeah. Listen, I agree.
But yeah, I I like the idea of exploring options and look at what what are other possibilities, but um it'd be foolish not to at least consider this. And if it becomes too unwieldy to remove it, transport it and then um reassemble it, then then we have to have another option. We should have other options ready to roll.
Okay, so looking to getting a quote. Yeah, okay.
All right, that brings us to policy. And we have four items. Policy thirty-two eighty-two, staff acceptable use of internet, social networks and other forms of electronic communication. And then forty-two eighty-two, which is same thing except for support staff, the AI policy uh progress from the committee. And then we had tabled policy fifty-four sixty for high school graduation regulation fifty-five sixteen for electronic communication device use.
I'll take care of policy, just pull one thing up.
Not to go out of order, but the AI committee. I mean, I'm on it. I haven't been to one meeting because they're at three fifteen, but the stuff that uh Mr. Shea is sending out as far as the information, like the backup, and it it's like amazing. Um I'm trying to like capture it so I can use it at work because the the information is so good. Um so again, I see what you guys are doing. You should be commended. You're doing a great job.
And I guess that's a, it's an opening to move out of sequence somewhat and since Mr. Shea is here and would have volunteered to speak about this if I had told me had to. Um why not capitalize on that? But I I do have a summary from our AI team meeting from Thursday of last week, which was generated by, of all people, Mr. Shea. Um just really quickly, we we had a discussion about different AI tools that are available. Um and we did talk about what should be made available or kept available and and what should be blocked. And for those of us who have lived through a lot of changes in the educational landscape over the past three decades, there's a knee-jerk reaction oftentimes to block things. Um YouTube was blocked by districts for for years because they're afraid of what content was there, instead of looking at capitalizing on what was there. Uh what I was so impressed with, we were talking about the tools and I'm sure you can echo this, Matt, is that one of our students was speaking incredibly eloquently about tools, like definitely don't allow deep seek to be able to be used, but that um there's a lot less harm in chat GPT. Probably managed this better than I could.
Can you hear me? Hey, there we go. Uh yeah, you know, this is of course a topic near and dear to my heart that I could talk for an hour about, but I'll try to narrow it down to sixty seconds. Um the the committee's doing a really good job of trying to make some some, a handful of actionable items to get into our teachers' hands and into our students' hands like right now. Uh you know, the question is constantly coming up about academic integrity and you know, the teachers are definitely looking for some guidance. I have parents reaching out, asking questions. Uh and actually, I I we I might be sitting in on the next CPAC meeting. We'll see if we can put that together. Uh you know, so there there's constant questions. Uh fortunately, you know, the committee's doing a really good job of of starting to move forward and make some progress on you know, a one-page statement that will give some some more clear guidance to our staff and students, you know, in in the community. And that might help uh, you know, point the policy in a direction. We're also working on uh like an AI scale to put in classrooms, so teachers can kind of point to it and say, okay, for this assignment, you know, there's no AI or there's some AI or you can use all the AI you want and and that scale will spell out, you know, what's acceptable. Like, can you use uh Grammarly, which is an AI grammar check? Um or can you not even use that? So to better kind of like clearly define each assignment for the students, which will give a lot of guidance to the teachers. So we we have a lot of things in front of the committee right now. I'm hoping to send a survey out this week to the teachers to get. So we, we have a lot of things in front of the committee right now. I'm hoping to send a survey out this week to the teachers to get kind of some feedback now that we've gotten this far. So we're, we're making some good progress. We'll, you know, af- soon after that, we'll start talking more policy and then starting to involve, you know, of course, the policy committee um, and, and then the board at, at large. So, um, yeah, we're doing a good job. And so for everyone that's, that's been attending um, or wants to attend, uh, thank you for all that. I think everyone's been doing a really good job, so.
All right. Thank you, Matt. And then um to, to piggyback on that too with the, the one-page statement, um, we're really huge proponents here of one-pagers. They're accessible. It forces you as an author to consolidate your information down and strip it down to its basics, which is helpful for the audience. Um, and we're looking at our March meeting to be able to generate a one-pager that we could push out to the district with a general stance on AI. And then have a much fuller plan. Um, I had spoken about maybe having like a mid-sized document too. I think Montville had a two to four pager, I think. Uh, excuse me. Uh, and the next two items were the honor code, um, to help students understand academic integrity and AI. And then we're going to look to survey staff and students about their knowledge and what they'd like to see us implement. Anything else, Matt? I get, I get very emotional. So if the camera picked me, picked up that I was tearing up there, it's uh the excitement of this. Uh, just the other ones, I can summarize pretty quickly. Um, policy thirty two eighty two and policy forty two eighty two were approved at the December of two thousand twelve board meeting. Problem being they're not on our website nor are they on our books. So uh, Mrs. Aug and I have been searching for them. We were able to find forty two eighty two on um, on our Google Drive. It was added in two thousand fifteen, right about the same time we got the drive. And we're looking to find a copy of thirty two eighty two. And we'll say that they are um representative of what you would expect two thousand twelve policies to have to say about social media. So these are both going to be open to revision, but we will post the existing documents that we have on the district website again, as they are approved policy. I don't know what happened over the course of the years. They were just lost to the passage of time, but um we're going to look to resuscitate them. And then we have two policies, actually one policy and a regulation that have been tabled and we are currently working on them. Excuse me. The high school graduation, uh fifty four sixty, Ms. Vance School is at a training with state where they talked about updating that. So we're not going to do two updates in three months. We'll do them all at once. And then sorry. And then the regulation, we're going to have the admin team provide input on how best to manage electronic communication devices at K to five, six to eight and nine to twelve.
All right. Any questions on policy? All right. Uh, next opportunity for public comment on any topic and there's nobody here, so no one to comment. Um, unfinished business, any board member, any unfinished business? Any new business? Board member announcements?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I uh attended the three, really, I mean, it was supposed to be two, but it was really three um game on Gavin games. And uh to no surprise, you know, Pum Aquatic showed up and they were fantastic. Um, you know, seeing, seeing Gavin on the screen at the boys' game, uh definitely emotional uh moment. And uh praying and wishing him the best.
Anybody else? All right, we do have reason to
Yeah, there's one.
I just, I just wanted to um commend Mr. Gibbs. I know this was a tremendous lift preparing the budget. Um, I'm going through it myself, so I I give you a lot of credit. Um, and I just want to say, you know, looking through some of this stuff and back up and just, I've been attending meetings now for over a year and watching you guys um conduct business. And I just want to say that you guys have done a tremendous job making some uh proactive moves uh that are fiscally responsible. So um, and Sam speaking to some of the increases, um, all of the uh districts that don't have any alternative energy like you guys do, you have your solar and so forth, um, we're facing twenty percent increases in our energy costs. Um, so and that's like global. I don't know if everyone got the email this week from like JC P and L, like expect all these increases. That's obviously schools face that too. Um, Three Mile Island is coming back on the grid because Microsoft is, uh, you know, um they hired them to basically handle their new AI. So um, the grid in, as a whole is experiencing these massive influxes and you guys have really safeguarded yourself in a lot of ways and that's just one of the ways. So um, kudos to you guys. Um, Gordon, it looks great. Good job. And uh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We do have reason to go into executive session. We will discuss student matters. No action will be taken and we will adjourn from there. Our next meeting will be March thirteenth here at the high school and it will be our preliminary budget meeting. So I encourage everyone to come out, ask questions and attend. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
So second? All in favor? All in favor? Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.